Good evening. Welcome to the Livonia Public Schools Committee of the Whole meeting of September 12th, 2016. We don't have an awful lot of items on our agenda this evening, but we do have items of great importance. The first item on our agenda this evening is going to be Audience Communications. As we begin the Audience Communications portion of the meeting, if you have a blue slip and would like to participate in Audience Communications, if you could get it to the end of this table at this time, I would appreciate it, and that way I can make sure that I call on you at the appropriate time. We have a Committee of the Whole meeting, as we said, this evening. The function of a Committee of the Whole meeting is not to take any votes or decide on any issues, per se. This is the kind of meeting where we deliberate on issues. We will have a lot of discussion on issues, but we will not have any votes on those issues. Typically, items that are coming to the Board this evening have been discussed at a study session where we've gotten an initial look at these items. They're coming to a Committee of the Whole for some deeper discussion at this time. If the Board is ready to vote on these items at the end of our discussion this evening, we will put them up for a vote next week at our regular meeting, or our general voting meeting. If not, we may ask our administration to go back and get more information for us, or simply discuss them at future meetings. So there will be no decisions made this evening. If you do want to have any, or attend any meetings where the final decisions on any of these items will be made, that would be next week. And frankly, I commend you for coming out to the Committee of the Whole meetings. As I've said before, they are my favorite meetings, really. That's where we really do kind of get into some depth and really discuss a lot of the ins and outs of a lot of these issues. If you cannot attend these meetings, you are also welcome to watch them from home. They're also visible on our website after the meeting this evening. If you'd like an agenda for this evening, the agendas can be found just outside the door, on the table right next to where the Audience Communication blue slips were found. If you are watching from home and you'd like to follow along with our agenda, you can find it on our website. That is at www.livoniapublicschools.org. You can hover over the Board tab, and then you can drop right down to Agendas and follow along with us this evening. Some of you who are more frequent watchers of school board meetings may notice that we are missing a few of our Cabinet members this evening. They are out at some of our area open houses. We have an awful lot of open houses going on this week, next week, and the following. So some of our Cabinet members will be joining us a little bit later in the evening, but they are out doing a whole lot more district work that they need to get done this evening. That's why they will be a little bit late. Next item on our agenda is Item 1, Audience Communications. Audience Communications is a time that the Board sets aside to listen to members of the community. It's very intentionally not a question-and-answer session. It's a time for the Board to simply listen to concerns that are raised from our community members. We do have a policy that we ask that everyone respect, which is that each speaker who would like to address the Board, respect the three-minute time limit. We do have Mr. Johnson who will be timing for us. If you hear a little beep, you'll know that you've hit your three minutes, and we've just found that to be a little bit more polite way than having someone interrupt a speaker to ask them to wind up their comments. So if you do hear that beep, if you could wind up your comments, that will be appreciated. For the benefit of those who may not have attended many Board meetings in the past, the function of the Board of Education is threefold, and that is, number one, to hire and evaluate the Superintendent, which we are very grateful to have accomplished this past year in hiring Mrs. Oakwist as our new Superintendent, following many, many years of Dr. Leepa. The second function of the Board of Education is to set policies for the district, and the third function is to set long-term goals or strategic planning, and to match the budget up to those goals. So if the item that you're going to be talking to the Board about tonight falls into one of those three categories, you can expect a response back from the Board of Education. If the item that you're going to be discussing tonight falls into anything else, which is what we refer to as the day-to-day operations of the district, you can expect your response to come from our Superintendent, Mrs. Andrea Oakwist. Just a little bit of a heads-up as to how Audience Communications works and what you can expect from here. The first person who would like to participate in Audience Communication tonight is Sally Randall. Ms. Randall, would you like to come up? You can, I'm sorry, you can have a seat right here, and then just right here?
Right in front of the microphone.
Yep?
Right in front of the microphone.
Right in front of the microphone, where people don't usually want to be, but that's where you are. Good evening.
I never do.
That's okay. Welcome. Good evening.
Actually, I appreciate, I appreciate being able to speak tonight. My concern is the growth of young families on our block alone, and the closing of CAS School. Our kids went to CAS. I've been there 33 years on Fairlane Drive. We have watched kids go off to college, get married, parents decide to scale down, and they don't need such a large home. And it does, and new families move in, young families, new kids. And in our block alone, which is, I'm talking about cul-de-sac, eight homes. There are a total of seven, eight new school kids aged, three which will be starting CAS this fall. If you do our block, which is south of the Swim Club, which is a very short block on Fairlane Drive, there is a total of 13 new kids and new families, and eight will be using CAS in this coming year, or in a few years. Some of them are like four years old. So I think we need to look at future growth in Livonia. Having Burton Hollow, having the Swim Club, and having the school there is why people bought there. It is a safe neighborhood. People feel very comfortable letting their kids walk to school, and I just think we need to think about that. I think some of the problem might have been when we opened Riley, and we took some of the kids from there, put them into Riley, and with no forethought, that the fact is maybe we should have kept the fifth graders where they were. I guess the other concern I have is the young families are good for Livonia. They're good for business, they're good for tax base. And if we can't attract young families, as for a long while you know, Livonia was older people that didn't want to leave because it was so nice. We said you won't answer questions, but I have a concern of what are they going to do at the building? And since you can't answer that tonight, I will listen for that answer. But I do hope you think about the growth. I know you have more statistics than I do. Mine was just by foot, so I appreciate your, being able to speak.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
The next speaker this evening is Kevin Merkier. Good evening.
Good evening. How are you tonight?
I'm doing well, thank you. How are you?
I am well. My topic is CAS. First of all, I'd like to congratulate you. You are doing a great job. We have, my wife and I have had two kids go through CAS. Number one is a sophomore up at State studying human biology, doing great. The second one is a 10th grader in Stevenson this year. As a 9th grader, he took the SAT exam and scored a 1270 out of 1600. So whatever you're doing, keep it up. He's doing a great job. But, I'm sure you knew there was a "but" coming. So, yeah, we obviously would like to see CAS stay open. We would like that decision to be made not in a vacuum. If you look at CAS as a standalone, and I don't know what the consultants are telling us, but we can't look at CAS as standalone. We need to look at the impact on property values. Having CAS there is a great boost to property values. Did a little bit of research, and it's incredible, actually, what an elementary school in the neighborhood does for property values. Secondly, the retail environment. We want more young families in, and I'm sure if we went to the management of Bush, Bush the supermarket, they would rather see young families moving in, buying less of milk, more than I buy. And then the second one is feeder to Stevenson. I really don't want to be sitting here in six years with a consultant's report saying, "Well, we don't have anything feeding Stevenson anymore, so we have to shut down Stevenson." Okay? So we have to look at the impact on the entire school system when we decide whether or not to keep CAS open, because it does feed Stevenson. And if you shut off the elementary schools feeding Stevenson, six years from now, we'll be having the same conversation about shutting down Stevenson. And I don't know what we spent over there this summer, or what we continue to spend over there this summer, but it looks like we're investing quite a bit in that school. So, so we'd obviously like to see Stevenson stay open. That's all I got. Don't make the decision in a vacuum. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Anna Merkier.
Good evening, everyone. I'm actually here to support my husband, because I too am concerned about the closing or the possibility of CAS closing. And I have, I know you said you're not going to answer questions, but I'm assuming you've looked at all the other elementary schools that can be closed, and one that comes to mind is Garfield. I'm not sure what the situation is there. I know I subbed there a couple of times, but, you know, I'm sure there's reasons why people have chosen CAS. But anyway, the other reason I wanted, when my husband said he was coming, I said, "I'm going to come along and ask about the situation at Stevenson." It's really alarming. It's gotten better, because last week, I had a really hard time coming out of my sub, Burton Hollow, going to work, making a left turn, because the traffic was backed up all the way to Wayne Road. But it's not like that anymore, so I'm not sure if it's because I'm leaving a little later, or what. But my concern is more the safety issue, and I'm getting this just firsthand from my son, who was trying to cross. He hasn't said anything today, but last week, he crosses at the light that's closest to Farmington Road. And he said cars were making left-hand turns out of there. Last year, they were not, but I know that the traffic is rerouted because of the construction. And he said it was really hard crossing, people were beeping, and there was a situation. But there's a police officer there, so hopefully he'll continue, or she'll continue. I don't know if it's a man or a woman, but I'm really concerned for the kid's safety trying to cross the Six Mile, so that's it, basically.
All right. Thank you. Our last speaker is Mike Lothmer. If I'm pronouncing that correctly? Good evening.
Good evening. This is a great to be here. This is actually my first Board meeting, so I'm impressed with professionalism.
Hopefully you can come back for a lot more.
No, I'm actually a former neighbor of Sally Randall. I live two houses down. I've actually moved. I'm on Five Mile Road now. But like Sally, I have actually two kids now at CAS. They love it. I can tell you that CAS being where it is in that neighborhood is just a huge draw. Sally mentioned the Swim Club. Being right in the heart of a neighborhood is terrific. I do want to say that I hear the talk of closing schools. I don't think we should close any, and that's just my view as a Livonia resident. I'd like to mimic Sally's thought that we should focus on growth. And when I say that, I'm coming, I know I'm coming in from the outside, once again, my first Board meeting ever, but I would like to challenge the Committee to see, what can we do with extra space? When we talk to Plant Moran, we talk to these consultants, what can we do for growth? Here's some examples. Can we use extra room for maybe preschool? And I know it's thinking out of the box, but even at the federal level, I know they're talking about preschool programs. What can we do to maybe bring in preschoolers? And families are moving into the neighborhoods. What can we do to maybe think outside of the box? Even to the point of, could we use room for daycare? I know maybe it would, you know, modify rooms, but what can we do? I'm also going to ask, what can we do from a community outreach perspective? I would be willing to bet, if you talked to the families, if everybody had to come out of pocket, worst case, once again, totally out of the norm, I bet people would be willing to keep CAS open if they had to come out of pocket. Here's a question that maybe could be followed up in the newsletter. What is a budget shortfall that we're currently seeing at CAS? I mean, these are types of specifics I think people would like to see. Then my final statement would be, where does it stop? You close down a great elementary like CAS, what's next? You know, it wouldn't be a good sign, I don't think, for the city of Livonia. So I'll leave, I'll leave it at that, and appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We do not have any further blue slips. We have heard from a couple, about a couple of topics this evening. The traffic light situation is one of those that would fall on the day-to-day operations issue, so those that have spoken to that issue can expect a response back from Mrs. Oakwist. Those who have spoken to the CAS situation, those who are here are probably aware of it, but in case that folks are listening from home, there's not yet a recommendation on any building usage or lack thereof. That is being studied by a Committee, and it will be studied for at least a few more months before any recommendations are being made. It is certainly not only CAS, but many, many buildings. The purpose is that this Board hired Plant Moran Cressa to study the long-term usage of our buildings and our enrollment, to make certain that we do not put any tax dollars into a building that is not foreseen to be open five to 10 years from now. We want to make certain that this Board is spending the tax dollars very, very wisely. There's a Committee studying that issue in depth. Many, many buildings are in the study, in addition to CAS. There are not recommendations yet, and we don't expect those recommendations yet for a few more months, just as an update on that item. The next item on our agenda this evening is Item 2, Committee of the Whole. 2A is the designation of voting delegates for MASB's 2016 Delegate Assembly. If I may interrupt myself here, some of you touched on some issues that you may want to hang around for the rest of the meeting, because some of the items coming up might help address some of your suggestions that made during Audience Communication. I apologize for jumping back and forth. Item 2A, Committee of the Whole. The designation of voting delegates for MASB's 2016 Delegate Assembly. Mrs. Oakwist, would you like to address this item for the Board?
Yes, so this is an annual item on our agenda, and as you know, the MASB Delegate Assembly will begin on Thursday, November 10th, as part of the annual, as part of the annual conference. And so as is customary, we have the opportunity to assign delegates and alternates for voting at this meeting. And as you saw in your packet, any school board member may speak on the issues or participate in the debate. However, only delegates and alternates named by this Board may offer motions and vote on issues. And so we are able to offer four names for voting, and four as delegates, and four as alternates. So I know a number of you are planning on attending, and so this will be, we will bring this forward to next week's voting meeting. So if you'd like to think about it, if you plan to attend and would like to serve as a delegate or an alternate, we could certainly do that. So I don't know if you want to have any conversation now?
Mm-hmm. I would like to. Yep. Are there members, I believe the numbers, you mentioned four and four, I believe it's four and three, that we can name four delegates, three alternates?
Okay.
Is anybody knowing that they're going to be attending that evening and interested in being a delegate for our Board?
Which evening?
This is Thursday evening.
Thursday, November 10th at 7:30.
Right. If you don't know yet, you can, you can let Jill Wozniak know. Our Secretary would know to go ahead and include you on that. But are any of, any of the folks here planning on being at that, at that portion?
Is anybody else going, driving down that night?
I'm not sure if I'm going to be, I'm going to be there during the day. I'm not sure if I'm going to be there in the evening, so I'm going to put myself down as, as an alternate if...
I would be happy to do it. I just, quite frankly, don't like driving down into Detroit. I always get lost. But I'll have to suck it up and probably drive down.
Okay. So you're interested in being put on?
Yes.
And this, this does not obligate anyone to being there. It's basically, if you are there, would you like to be, would you like to be able to vote for our Board of Education? So typically, what we, we wind up listing all seven of us. It's a matter of, would you like to be listed as a, and a delegate, or like to be listed as an alternate?
I'm going to plan on going.
I might be there Friday, Thursday evening. I know I'll be there during Thursday, during the day, so I'm going to, I'll go ahead and put myself down as, as a voting delegate, unless there is a fourth person who is definitely going to be there, in which case I'll defer.
I will be there Friday, Saturday, but not Thursday.
Not Thursday night, okay.
Mr. Johnson, did you say yes?
Do we have to be registered for the conference to go to the Delegate Assembly?
I don't believe so. Because the conference is during the day.
Okay. Then I can probably go at night, so maybe...
It would be great if we could go down together, because I go into the conference on Thursday morning, but I won't. I'd probably just drive down for the meeting, come back, and then drive back down Thursday morning.
Then go ahead and put me down.
Okay. Would anybody else have a possibility? Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
It's all those J's.
My wife would not appreciate it.
Yeah, yes, I'm getting in trouble here.
I had a meeting that was scheduled then, but two of the people there are actually going to be at the conference, so they canceled that meeting, which makes me available. So I'd be happy to be considered a delegate.
Okay. Mrs. McDonald and Mrs. Laura, would you like to be considered delegates or alternates or on either of those lists? We generally list ourselves, and one or the other. Alternate?
Yes.
Alternate? Okay.
Pass those names along to Mrs. Wozniak.
Exactly. So we have Mrs. Bonnefield, Mrs. Burton, Mrs. Jarvis, Mr. Johnson as delegates, and alternates would be Mr. Centers, Mrs. Laura, Mrs. McDonald. Okay. And I don't know that we have to vote on this, Mrs. Oakwist. I believe that we can just discuss this at this meeting, and assign it, and send it down. I don't think we have to have a vote on that officially. All righty. The next item on our agenda is Item 2B, the Wayne County RISA Educational Enhancement Millage Presentation. Bye, Mrs. Oakwist.
Yes. So I just wanted to give you a brief update. As you know, as I put in your packet, we will be going out and doing a number of, I believe we have 42 informational presentations scheduled. And so we will be sharing information with our staff and with our parent communities at each of our schools, and in our programs or departments. I wanted to share with you a draft of the flyer. This isn't entirely completed, but this has been created at Wayne County RISA. So just a brief moment, just we'll go back in history a couple of months. As you know, we spent time at, I think, four or five different meetings discussing the Regional Educational Enhancement Millage. It's really the only mechanism, the local, only local mechanism left that allows a region or a group of school districts to levy a local millage for operational purposes for their district. So as you know, we had the overwhelming majority of districts in Wayne County pass resolutions to ask RISA to put this on the ballot. And so this question will be, will be before the voters on the November ballot, and for many, for all of the school districts in Wayne County, the students would be the beneficiaries of this. And so the Wayne County Regional Enhancement Millage, again, is worked through Wayne County Regional Education Agency, and the two mills proposed to be levied would be levied over six years, and it would generate approximately $385 per pupil in each district. And so that is, again, a significant revenue, consistent revenue stream. And for our district, that would generate approximately $5.6 million a year, each year for six years. So there is some information on, on the front of this that is relatively generic for the entire region. And so again, this would be for all of the districts in the region. These monies would not be levied or go to any charter schools or any public school academies. So this is solely for the public school districts in our region. On the back, there's some specific information. This is a piece of the flyer that will be shared with, with members of the community. And so there's a little more information on the back, specific to Livonia, and some of the goals of the Education Enhancement Millage for this region. So as you know, one of the things that we wanted to do was be sure that our community and our staff were aware of this question before them, and so we will begin presentations this Wednesday. I'm not sure if I included in your packet last week. If I didn't, I'll include it this week, the specific schedule of millage presentations. Okay. So we have finalized that, and members of Cabinet and I will be going out for all of these presentations. Again, this is informational only. One of the things we did review at Cabinet are the Michigan Campaign's Finance Acts, do's and don'ts for school districts. So you know that there are very careful guidelines with regard to our ability to provide information to constituents or to our community, but not advocacy. And so we will be sharing this information, and we've reviewed all of that together as Cabinet, and we'll be starting those presentations this week. They'll continue on through the end of October. Okay?
Yes.
Mrs. Oakwist, I have a question about the money distribution.
Sure.
I know in the past, or I think it was in the past, it wasn't going to be distributed equally. Certain school districts would get a larger portion than others. Has that changed?
Well, it is not, it's changed, that hasn't changed. That is correct. The per pupil amount is the same for every, every child in every district. So that is the same across all of our districts in the region. Some districts will receive more than others, simply by the number of pupils they have in the district. But there is not a graduated amount by any particular area of the region.
Okay. All right, great. Thank you.
Sure, you're welcome. And again, this money would be distributed throughout each region, and the dollars generated are for use, local use for the local operating budget, as determined through the budget priority process by the local Board of Education. And then there are annual independent financial audits to ensure that, for the taxpayers, that this money is being utilized appropriately within each district in the region. Okay? Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield.
Mrs. Oakwist, we had a comment tonight from one of our speakers that residents of Livonia would be happy to provide out-of-pocket funds to help the district, and I think we all feel that way. But if you could just explain why we can't do that, and what the importance is of going for the Wayne, for this, this particular millage, and why we can't just separate it out and have our own Livonia millage, and be able to do those things that we'd really like to be able to do for our, our district.
Right. Well, when the funding mechanisms changed in 1994 through Prop A, the, prior to that time, local school districts were able to go out and levy and ask for local operating villages. And so there would be times when Livonia and many districts around, to perhaps make up the difference for their budgets, or to enhance programming available to students, they were able to determine that it was appropriate to go out to the community and ask for a local millage, and those funds would then return back to the local district itself, the individual district. The majority of our funds now are based upon a per pupil allocation provided to us by the state of Michigan. And so the legislature determines each year what that, whether or not there will be an increase or a decrease in the per pupil allocation. So each year, as you know, after the Revenue Estimating Conference in Lansing that takes place usually in late January, early February, from that point on, we are doing our best to try to read the tea leaves a bit and determine what our funding will be for the next year. And so as we go through that budgeting process very carefully each winter and spring, as you know, for instance, this past year, we brought to you continuously three different budget scenarios. One, if there was no increase in per pupil allocations. I'm going to find a way not to be tongue-tied with that phrase. And then if there was a modest per pupil allocation, or if there was a larger per pupil allocation. And we continued to do that budgeting all the way through until we felt relatively secure that the budget that would be passed by the legislature would include an increase. So the portions collected, for instance, through local property taxes, et cetera, used to be the largest base of funding for our, for our schools. And that money now comes through the General Operating Fund and the School Aid Fund from the state. And so we really are beholden each year to the increases or decreases of that. And so because districts can no longer ask for an individual millage for operating funds, now I don't want to confuse the community, because recently in 2013, they very generously, our community very generously passed the bond issue. And a bond issue is very specific in its purpose and its scope and focus, and that's related to capital improvement, or renovations, et cetera. That cannot be used at all for any operating funds in the district. There are very, very clear guidelines for, for bond issues, let's say. So oftentimes, our folks, as you've heard in the past few years, when we've gone through and made recommendations for budget reduction, some of the things we hear are, you know, can we, could we go for a millage to cover those things, or to, whether it's lowering class size, or, you know, adding programs back and things. So bond issues cannot, bond issue money cannot be used for that, nor can sinking fund. Again, sinking fund is a, is, again, a mechanism that allows us to do much-needed repairs and upkeep of our facilities, so boiler replacement, parking lot, roofs. And it is a bit of a pay-as-you-go opportunity. So there's the sinking fund millage and bond issues, but they're no longer local villages. So maybe a longer answer than you were, you were hoping. But how am I doing, Mrs. Abby?
Very well.
Okay, I'm just double-checking with our financial guru, am I right? But, so this is, this opportunity is allowed by the state of Michigan, but an entire region has to determine that they are going to request to their voters the opportunity to have an educational enhancement millage, and again, for the funds to be utilized within that entire region. Wayne County has been hit significantly... Wayne County has been hit significantly to the tune of almost five hundred million dollars in decreases over the past few years. And so it's been significant, and, as you know, the districts around us, including Livonia, you know, have seen those budget challenges over the years. I think this board has done a tremendous job in both cost containment and revenue enhancement, to really be able to preserve programming for our students. We really have such amazing opportunities for our students, pre-K, post-secondary. And I've got to tell you, you don't need to spend very much time in our schools to see what we have to offer our students. And so this opportunity is something that we think will help stabilize our funding within the district, and so certainly not only ours, but within the region, so.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Questions or comments from other board members? No? As, in, piggybacking on what Superintendent Oquus was explaining, Livonia's, of course, taxpayers still do pay a great amount of money for our educational purposes. It gets sent to Lansing, and then Lansing decides how much of it comes back to Livonia. Typically, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's about seventy cents on the dollar. Is that still pretty accurate?
Mm-hmm.
With this Wayne County Enhancement Millage, when we get back seventy cents on the dollar, the remaining thirty cents on the dollar goes to other districts throughout the state of Michigan and/or other purposes that the state determines that that money sometimes needs to be used for, whether it should or shouldn't. That's reality. With the proposed Wayne County Enhancement Millage that will be coming up in November, we are likely to get back about the same seventy cents on the dollar. The difference is, we would be putting our dollar into Wayne County because it's collected on a property tax basis, and Livonia is one of the wealthier communities in Wayne County. And then that's, it's based on property taxes for all the homes in Wayne County, and then that is divvied up per student. So we would put in a considerable amount of money because we are Wayne County, or we are Livonia, rather, and we have some of the wealthier homes in the county. We would also be getting back quite a bit because we have one of the largest school districts in Wayne County. We would still be getting back probably about seventy cents on the dollar because our homes are worth more than, dollar-wise, than other, homes in other areas of the county. The difference is, and this is a significant difference in my opinion, that additional thirty cents is going to our neighbors, and it's going into school districts with certainty. It is absolutely going to schools. It cannot be spent on anything else, and it will be staying inside Wayne County and utilized in Wayne County that year for our students. To me, I see this as the closest thing that we can come to raising our own taxes for our own community. It's true that we would be getting back seventy cents on the dollar. That's the reality of what we're getting back right now, anyway, and at least our extra thirty cents goes to our neighbors, left to the, to the left and right of us. Mrs. Jarvis.
Thank you, President Burton. I want to piggyback on what you were saying. The thirty cents on the dollar that does not, that will not stay in Livonia, will stay in Wayne County. But it's also important to recognize that a lot of Livonia's children don't get educated in Livonia. They get educated in neighboring districts, in some of the Wayne RISA's programs, the countywide programs, like our ASD kids and some of the other children that are special need kids that go to Garden City or to other districts. And similarly, we take in children from neighboring districts as well. So we already have a crossover of students, and the crossover of dollars, that thirty percent, it's not quite as drastic when you realize that some of that's following our own kids, too.
Any other questions or comments from board members? All righty. Oh, Mr. Centers, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I think that, you know, had we not, this is a solution that, in plentiful times, would probably not be appealing to a district like Livonia. But with statewide declining enrollment being as sharp as it has been, and the state being less than generous in their foundation allowance, this is something that we've really begged for for a long time, these kinds of increases from the state of Michigan. We have not got them for years and years. So this is an opportunity for our voters to look hard at this, and it is a chance for them to support, you know, public education in the region and Livonia.
All righty. Any other questions or comments from the board? Mrs. Oquus, thank you for getting this detailed information and for keeping the board and the public apprised as to the options that we have in November.
Certainly.
The next item on our agenda is Item Three, the Finance Committee, and I'll turn it over to Mrs. Jarvis.
Thank you, President Burton. We have a rather short agenda for the Finance Committee, with only two items on it tonight. The first is the recommendation to purchase four replacement tractors, a two thousand thirteen bond issue, and we'll refer to Ms. Abby for that.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone.
Evening.
And joining us at the table is Harry Lau, our Administrator of Operations, and he'll nudge me or jump in if I don't get everything right on the replacement tractor.
This is going to go real smooth.
Yeah, okay. Good. We did get an opportunity to put in your packet this week, our request to purchase four new tractors. Three of those tractors will go to our three high schools. Will replace the current tractors that are there that are twenty years old, and they are just definitely ready to be retired. We have replaced, fixed, and held together with duct tape and bubble gum as long as our operations department could. The fourth one is actually for the maintenance department, and that's replacing one that died last year sometime, so we're.
I think it was in the vortex.
Oh, last, the winter, two winters ago.
The winter vortex, yes.
Yeah. So we are, you do have the bid tabulation in your packet. We are looking to get this off of one of the purchasing sites, MyDeals, so it does meet our purchasing requirements. Harry has some experience with these models and with these brands, and is very excited to recommend that we move forward with this purchase. This is out of the two thousand thirteen bond proceeds. More specifically, if you recall, when we put together our bond proceeds, we had some money set aside for both, replacement of both custodial and maintenance equipment. And then we took that budget of just a little over a million dollars, and we split it between the Series One and the Series Two bonds, and we said, "Go ahead and do your thing with the Series One bond," based on their needs that they had put together as part of our bond planning, and then once we saw the second series, start putting together your priority list for the second series. So here we are. We sold the second series in February, and both the operation, both the maintenance and custodial side are putting together, and this is their first priority on that list, is to have these four tractor replacements. So with that, I'll let's see if Harry wants to add anything or answer any questions.
As we go forward, and the reason for this purchase in particular is that our aging fleet, that we have one Super Duty two fifty pickup at each high school that helps with the snow removal duties. In the case that these trucks fail, they will have this tractor to pick up those duties. So it kind of gives us a safety net to help open school on, on weather days.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm reading here.
Okay, Mrs. Jarvis, I might get you sometimes. Harry, how does this, where does this put us as far as our needs go with equipment? Are we getting close to doing everything? Well, I'm sure we don't have, you know, money to do everything, but I'm sure this helps considerably, but what else needs to be done, I guess?
Well, there's some inside equipment, auto scrubbers that wash our hallways and our classrooms, and also some more carpet extractors and some miscellaneous things. And certainly, in the maintenance realm of things, we would like to purchase more equipment, accessories, if you will, you know, for digging, you know, like a backhoe type or drilling, or these type of things to help us with our work. So we're pretty close, and we're happy to have this money. We really appreciate it. And so we're kind of getting more creative to help ourselves become more efficient in what we do with less people.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Centers.
Harry, how often do the tractors get used, do you think?
At the high schools, they will be used not only for snow removal, but also grooming fields. We're going to purchase these with mowing decks so they can mow large lawns. So they'll be used in every season.
Yeah. Are other tractors John Deere's as well?
Yes, they are. They're a bit smaller. These are more of a considered agricultural, commercial grade. In two thousand fourteen, we purchased several garden tractors for the buildings, the elementaries to also cut their lawns and push their snow. So these are much larger tractors than what you'd see on a farm even. I mean, not real large, but larger.
President, please. For the benefit of the public, one of the prime reasons that this is so important is the, the number-one reason that we close school on a snow day is because we can't get the parking lots cleared out. That's the very first thing. Can the parking lots get cleared? And then we look at, so that we can get our students and our staff and our parents safely in and out of the buildings. And then we look at streets and sidewalks and so forth. Livonia, much to my kids' disappointment, but it's good for their education, has very few snow days, but it's because we keep our equipment as up-to-date as possible so that we can keep those buildings open and our kids in school.
Yes, I agree.
So these would be utilized at the three high schools and then one by the maintenance department?
Yes.
Okay.
It is within our budgets.
Mr. Jones.
Harry, the utility tractors, does the lawnmower attachment run off the PTO?
It's actually underneath. The mowing deck is underneath. So, no, it does not run off the PTO. I'm ninety-eight percent sure about that, so I may have to refer back to my notes and tell you for sure.
And we get a front-end blade with it?
Yes.
To push the snow?
Right.
Is it adaptable if we ever wanted to put, instead of a blade, put a snow thrower on it?
Yes. Actually, it's both front-end and back-end. The PTO would be adaptable to several different pieces of equipment.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Any other questions or comments?
We would like to put in on the regular committee if you agree.
It's good with me.
Yes, I'm fine with the regular agenda.
Regular agenda, thank you. And our next item under the Finance Committee? Thank you, Mr. Lawrence.
Thanks, Harry.
Is lease update, again with Ms. Abby.
Thank you. I have two different topics tonight under lease update. The first one, I just wanted to bring to the Board of Education a list of our current lessees in the district. So these are groups outside of Livonia Public Schools who rent space in our buildings currently. And when I say a lease, this means they have an agreement that's usually for twelve months or more. Separate from that, of course, you know, we have people who rent for one night a basketball pickup or teach a yoga class or something else. We call that building use or facility use. These are actually people who have a longer-term lease with us. What I wanted to let you know is, we're a little bit behind in getting these out to people, but everyone who has an open lease has it, should, has it or should have it shortly, and those will be coming to the Board of Education throughout this fall. These are all very perfunctory in that not, none of the lease terms have changed. You've seen these leases many, many times, and you'll see them again as they come to the Board of Education. But I just wanted you to have this list. So as we go throughout the fall, you'll recognize it and say, "Oh, yeah, I knew that one was coming." So, for example, about a third of the way down the list, you see Garfield Co-op. That's a small preschool over at Marshall. They've been with us many, many years. That's why it's called Garfield Co-op. Once upon a time, they were there. They have moved several times, but they've kept their name. They'll sign their lease, and when that, when those come in, we'll bring those to the Board of Education for your approval. It's up to you. I would say that it could go on consent agenda at those times. Again, the terms aren't changing. Those will, you can see the lease terms are generally for one year. They're pretty straightforward, but I will leave that up to you to decide. And then you've got several that are already out for several years. For example, some of our cell tower leases are multiple-year leases, so you won't be seeing those at all. So this is really just informational for you right now. The second thing I wanted, I'll stop and see if there's any questions on those, I'm sorry.
So just for the benefit of the public, you know, the types of leases we have on this list, we have five preschool or childcare centers that lease space within our schools currently. On here, with some cell tower leases, as you know, has been something that has been one of the revenue enhancement pieces for the district. We also have a couple of athletic programs that utilize some of our areas. So just as a, just as a reminder of the types of things that we utilize some of our current space to both increase the facility use and also generate some income within our district. So this is just a small summary of that.
And you can see that that is a large revenue generating item for the district, almost seven hundred thousand dollars. And that, you know, varies a little bit from year to year, depending on how much space and how many people we have and how many rooms they're using.
Any questions or comments?
The second item I wanted to share with you is the lease with the city of Livonia, specifically the Parks and Recreation lease. And this is for the utilization of the gymnastics room over at the Parks and Rec Center. You'll recall that we had some discussion on this actually way back in April. At that time, as you know, we've been using that particular room for our gymnastics program since the Parks and Rec and the city of Livonia built that building. Our program has been very happy there. They have very dedicated space that is strictly for our gymnastics program, and our program has done very well there. We have, they came to us back last year and asked for an increase in the amount that we're paying monthly, and it was a significant increase, and we had a discussion here at that time about it. You directed us to go back and see if we could negotiate a little bit more with the city. We did meet with the Parks and Recreation Department as well as the mayor, and they were just very, very cordial and helpful to the Livonia Public Schools. We really appreciate the time that they took to work through the financial issues as it relates to this lease. We're very pleased to be bringing this forward. This is for a one-year lease with an extension for a second year. We each have a ninety-day opt-out, so if we find out for some reason it isn't working for us, or the city decides it isn't working for them, we both have that opportunity. There is a six percent increase in the lease cost for Livonia Public Schools. It will work within our budget. In other words, we generate enough revenue in the gymnastics program to cover that increase. We also feel like it's very reasonable. We have been at least since two thousand eight, nine, and that's as far back as our financial computer database goes, without going to the warehouse and pulling out files. We've been at the same rate since two thousand eight, nine, so they have not required a raise in our monthly rental since that time. So we would recommend, one, that we continue with our gymnastics program, continue it at the rec, and enter into this lease agreement. Basically, the terms of this lease, other than the dollar amount, and what I said is the one-year lease with the one-year extension, is the same as we've had for many, many years with the city of Livonia. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
If there are no questions.
Mr. Johnson?
Then I need to make a disclosure.
Of course.
As I wear hats over at the Parks and Recreation Department, as the chairman of the Parks and Recreation Commission, I'm sure this will come up in that form as well. So I will recuse myself from voting both here and at that level, and I will make the same disclosure there.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Ms. Abby, just to repeat, the only change in this agreement, then you said, is the six percent increase in the length of time that it's covering.
Right. The ninety days is a little bit longer than it used to be. So we didn't ask for as much time, but I think it's fair for both. Ninety days seems very fair for both parties. So the termination, the percentage increase, and then the dates of the lease itself.
Okay.
Same, same space will be leasing, same opportunities for children in that space.
Okay. Thank you.
Mrs. Laura?
Thank you, Mrs. Jarvis. Mrs. Abby, refresh my memory. When we talked about this several months ago, and we asked you to go back and negotiate and close, what percentage were they asking?
I will have to double-check. It was around, yeah, it was around fifteen.
It's about fifteen. Oh, okay. Good job.
Well, we really appreciate. We had a very nice discussion with the city, and not just about, it really was a nice talk. Mrs. Oquus was there, of course, and we talked not just about that, but they're also looking for other ways for the Parks and Rec to partner with Livonia Public Schools. So they had some ideas for... We had a very nice discussion with the city, and not just about, it really was a nice talk. Mrs. Oakwist was there, of course, and we talked not just about that, but they're also looking for other ways for the Parks and Rec to partner with Livonia Public Schools. So, they had some ideas for other ways that they could partner with us and do some programs, athletic programs and whatnot with us. So, we were very happy to have an opportunity, not only to save some money, that's always a good thing, but also to continue those good relationships with the City of Livonia and with the Parks and Rec Department specifically. So, it was a very good meeting.
President Burton?
There's, again, for the public's benefit, this board is aware, but there are a number of agreements that go back and forth, as we say, across the street, across Farmington Road. We are a totally separate entity from the city itself, but we have this agreement where we're paying the city for this usage, for this gymnastics program. The city pays us to maintain their buses because it's less expensive for the city for us to do that. There are a number of such agreements that go back and forth, so it's not a one-item thing, and it's not all one way or the other. So, we really take, try to take a look at the whole big picture with these leases that come back and forth, how we can serve one another well and be fair with one another in each entity.
Any other questions or comments? Mrs. Bonnefield?
Ms. Abby, I just want to, I think you mentioned it, but I want to make sure that we don't gloss over this, is the fact that the, this gymnastics program is self-sustaining, correct?
Correct.
That this is not a drain on the district. This lease is not coming out of the operating funds, that it generates enough revenue to cover any of the costs.
Right, and that was part of our discussion, correct? We don't want to get into a position where that was not true.
Okay, thank you.
Last call?
I'd like to put this on the agenda.
Mm-hmm.
Probably be a regular.
Yeah, regular agenda. Either is fine with me.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Abby. President Burton, that's all for the Finance Committee tonight.
All righty. The next item on our agenda is Item 4, Curriculum Committee, and I'll turn it over to Mrs. Laura.
Thank you, President Burton. The Curriculum Committee tonight has two items on the agenda, and Mrs. Ellis will be leading us with both these items. The first item is Focus Schools Quarterly Report. Good evening, Mrs. Ellis.
Good evening, Mrs. Laura. Good evening, everyone. Thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity this evening to share with our Board of Education our fourth-quarter Focus School Report for the 2015-16 school year. As I have mentioned to the board in the past, the state requires us to share with the Board of Education at a public meeting our Focus Schools' efforts to close their student achievement gap. And so, the fourth-quarter report is going to include the months of June, July, and August. And, as you know, our schools were only in session two of, two weeks during that three-month period. So, tonight's Focus School Report will pretty much be a summary of what I had shared with the Board of Education during the summer academic programs presentation. So, I'm going to start there. We had three summer programs that were designed to prevent or reduce summer learning loss for elementary students, and then we had one program at the high school that was mostly for credit recovery purposes. Two of the programs, Camp Frost and Camp Emerson, were funded by Title I monies, and so they were only eligible to students in Title I schools. That included Cleveland, Hays, Garfield, Rosedale, Roosevelt, Cooper, and Johnson. The third program, which is Students Helping Students Literacy Program, is a summer literacy program for students, any student in the district who began first or second grade this fall. The program was developed in partnership with Livonia Public Schools, Madonna University, and the Curt Foundation. The high school program was available to any student in the high school. So, Camp Emerson and Camp Frost ran for four weeks. It began July 11th and concluded on August 4th, with sessions running every Monday through Thursday. Camp Frost had 122 kindergarten through sixth-grade students. Camp Emerson had 148 students. The Students' Three-Hour Program included a 90-minute literacy lesson daily. Students engaged in reading lessons, which focused on comprehension skills and also on developing their oral reading fluency. Daily writing lessons addressed the persuasive argument writing genre, which is tied directly to the Michigan Standards for Writing. Writing lessons and student practice was designed to improve writing confidence as well as writing stamina. And the use of technology was integrated into all of the literacy lessons. 45 minutes was also spent daily on math lessons that were designed to help students become fluent in their basic math facts, as well as develop problem-solving skills and computation skills. We also included math computer programs to increase student engagement as well as interest. And the students had a session in PE and in art, so that they had a well-rounded and diverse summer program. Our third summer program was designed for incoming first and second-grade students throughout the district. It was called the Students Helping Students Literacy Program. This is where Madonna University students tutored our LPS students in reading and writing. We had 14 first graders and 13 second graders from our K-4 schools. They attended two different, two-hour sessions at Garfield School. These sessions were held Monday through Thursday, beginning July 18th and concluding on August 4th. The tutors were Madonna University graduate students or students who were getting ready to begin their student teaching practicum. Each morning, students began with a whole-group literacy lesson. Tutors then met with their assigned two to three students for a small-group guided literacy instruction, where the emphasis was placed on phonemic awareness, word study using the district-adopted Words Their Way program, phonics, comprehension skills, and oral reading fluency. And then students wrote daily in response to the whole-group literacy lesson at the beginning or in response to their guided reading lesson. All three programs sent home weekly newsletters so that parents were kept informed of the lessons and the learning that occurred in these programs. In addition to these summer programs, our district offered a high school, summer school program. We had 182 students that attended the five-week program that ran every Monday through Thursday from July 5th through August 4th at Churchill High School. We had a 69% participation rate based on counselor and teacher referral. Most of the students enrolled in classes for credit recovery purposes. Our student registration filled 273 classroom seats, which meant that some students took more than one class, and we had 258 passing grades or a 95% passing rate, which is really exceptional. In order to evaluate the effectiveness of each of these summer programs, the teachers submitted an end-of-program evaluation, where student attendance, academic progress, and survey results were shared. As we've done in the past, the, I will provide Mrs. Oakwist with a hard copy of the fourth-quarter Focus School Report, which I'm sure she will include in her weekly update to you. Additionally, this report will be uploaded into the state's website so that we will fulfill that requirement. And at this point, I am, I have concluded the Focus School Quarterly Report for this fourth quarter.
Thank you, Mrs. Ellis. Any questions or comments? Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mrs. Laura. Mrs. Ellis, at the high school level, are the number of participants broken down by grade level by any chance, so that we know what of the 168, you say, students?
There were 182 students.
182. Do we know what grade levels they are at?
I don't have that readily available, but I'm sure I can provide that for you, absolutely.
Thank you.
Anyone else? President Burton?
All righty. We're going to interrupt the Curriculum Committee because Mrs. Abby has let me know that there was one additional portion of the lease update that did not get discussed, so we're going to jump back to leases for just a moment, and then we will continue, Mrs. Ellis, with Item 4B with the MStep results.
Sorry, Mrs. Ellis. This will be very quickly. Sorry, Board of Education, I apologize. I just wanted, if you have that sheet that I had handed out to you earlier, I just wanted to point out one thing. As part of the budget for the 2016-17 school year, the Board of Education included some one-time revenue enhancement, as we did for 15-16, in the sale of property. And we talked about a couple of different properties, one of which is the old Perrinville site or the triangle at Farmington, Joy, and Ann Arbor Road. And I wanted to give you an update on that, which is, the good news is, is they really are moving the old Perrinville school to Greenmead. So, there is a plan, and if you've been out there, you can see that they're well on their way to moving that school. So, we'll begin the marketing of that property as well. The other-
They sent Mr. Lau's picture to the board today.
Oh, okay, okay.
They sent us a, so if you remember, there was some concern about when they could go and be under traffic lights and things, so they had to create a route to get from there to Perrinville, and that, it looks like it is all systems go.
Yeah.
Right, Mr. Lau?
Yes.
Okay.
The second item that the board had talked about potentially is the sale of property is what was known as Clay Elementary. That's this former elementary school that's behind the strip mall, Bush's Strip Mall at Six Mile in the Newburgh area. And, as you know, we currently have a tenant in that building, which is why this came up under leases this evening. That is on here, and that, we have notified that tenant that at the end of our school year, so mid-June this year, that that lease will no longer be renewed. So, as you know, we had talked with that tenant many, many times verbally. I had her into our offices on several different occasions as we were having this discussion, you know, almost a year ago, relative to budgeting for this fiscal year. And while the board had not come to any conclusions, I just kind of wanted to keep her in the loop of knowing where we might end up. So, we did, I did have her in for that conversation. She had asked, we had originally talked about six months termination of her lease. She asked us to extend that to the end, to June, which we did do. So, that letter did go out to her with, at her request, that the lease be extended to June, so she could finish this year. So, she has received that, and I just wanted to let the Board of Education be aware of that.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Simmons?
Is there any indication that she is interested in leasing any other properties?
I know that Mr. Lau has taken her to at least two locations to look at the property. I'm not sure, she hasn't responded back as to whether she's interested or not, but there are two properties that she's had an opportunity to look at.
Great, thank you.
That was my same, my same question. I thought that I had remembered that she has other opportunities within the district.
Right, and she is using a good chunk of that building, so she's looking for a bigger space. But we also mentioned, if for some reason her program changed, and it was only two or three classrooms instead of the majority of the building, whatever it might be, to just keep us in mind, and, you know, we'd be happy to see if we had capacity somewhere for that. So, right now, she has pretty much the chunk of that elementary school, so that's, it's a big space, but keep it, you know, told her, keep it in mind if something changes.
And just to make note, the lease revenue amount is the amount generated by the lease, it's not the net revenue, correct?
Correct, right, so we still have to run and operate the building.
Any other questions or comments? President Burton?
One of the things I'd like to point out, too, is that when we had community forums back, it was over a year ago at this point, when we were looking at ways to be fiscally responsible within our district, one of the highest-ranked requests by our community members who attended and voiced opinions was that they would rather see us sell properties that are not being used for K-12 purposes, as opposed to cutting programs or increasing class sizes or so forth. So, this is, it was something that the board has been looking at, certainly not selling all of our properties, but selling things, selling pieces and selling them basically a piece or two at a time, so that we don't get all that revenue in one year and not be able to replace it the following year. But I want the public to know that this is in a direct answer to a request by the public of, if you have smaller pieces of property that you're not using for K-12 purposes and don't foresee doing that, please sell those before we impact our K-12 programs.
I think one of the positive things that the board has been able to do in that regard is, again, a perfect example of that is the Washington property. So, not only did that generate a significant amount of money for the district for the general operating fund, but the win-win is that there are 44 homes being built. And so, we're hoping that with the homes that are being built, that we will, you know, again, there are very limited areas in our, in our city that are, that currently, for new builds, so to speak. And so, it really is one of those opportunities, both there and the Nankin Mills property, were sold to developers and specifically for the purpose of building homes. And I think that was something that was a win-win for the community around that area, rather than having vacant land or, you know, unused property. And then it also potentially brings more families into, into the city and into the district, which is certainly a positive. So, again, you're certainly right, it was very, very high on the feedback list from our parents and our business community and the community members that attended the budget forums, and has been a piece of the revenue enhancement that the district has looked at for the past few years. Very judiciously and carefully, and also, you know, for the purposes, again, for development, and it was a positive on both ends.
I think Mrs. Oakwist said that would be our intent, as Clay as well, would be for home development.
Mrs. McDonald?
Thank you. So, I'm hoping that we can find some kind of resolution for little tots and Mrs. Sinque because they've been in our community for a very, very long time. So, I hope we can manage to accommodate her and her program and make it a good thing for everyone.
I hope so, too.
Any other questions?
Thank you, and pardon me for interrupting. Thank you.
Back to Mrs. Laura with curriculum.
Back to curriculum. We'll continue with the Curriculum Committee, and we have Item B, which is 2016 MStep and SAT data. Mrs. Ellis?
Thank you again. As you know, recently, the Michigan Department of Education removed the embargo on the 2016 MStep and SAT results, which is allowing me to share them with you this evening. So, I know that Mrs. Oakwist shared a chart of the data with you, but I thought for convenience, I'd bring a copy of the chart along tonight to share with you. So, MStep, or the Michigan Student Test of Educational Progress, is administered to all third-through-eighth-grade students in ELA and math, to fourth, seventh, and eleventh graders in science, and fifth, eighth, and eleventh graders in social studies. Our 11th-grade students took the SAT for the very first time this spring, and so this suite of assessment, assesses or tests are Michigan standards that are also aligned to college and career readiness. So, you have in front of you a chart that has the 2015 scores and the 2016 scores for MStep and MME, and then you only have one year of SAT data because that this is the first year that we administered the SAT test. So, what I thought I would do this evening is just share some of the highlights that you should, that would be noted as you review this data. So, I'm going to start by comparing our district results to the state results. So, as you look at our district results and compare them to the state results, you will see that our scores, our proficiency rates, are higher than the state in all 20 of the grade level and content areas tested. Then, when you look at our LPS results and compare our 2015 results to our 2016 results, you'll see that we saw some increases in our proficiency rates in 10 of the 18 content area tested. We saw increases in language arts in grades four, five, seven, and eight. We saw increases in our math scores in grades four, seven, and eight. And then, as you look at the results in science, you'll see that we saw increases in all three of the grade levels that are tested in science, four, seven, and 11. Now, when you look at the state results and you compare the 2015 state results to the 2016 state results, you'll see that there are similar patterns of increases in. So, you'll see sometimes when the state went up, we went up. When the state scores dropped, our states, our district scores dropped. It's not a one-to-one parallel, but there are similar increases and decreases. We're looking for the state to release what's called a- what's going to provide us an analysis on each of the content areas tested by standard. So, it'll give us an analysis of how we performed on each of the standards assessed on each of these tests. And at that time, we can get into a deeper dive or a deeper dig into the data and begin to analyze, so where are our strengths, and where are our areas in which we need to improve, and then put together a plan on how we're going to improve. Right now, we are looking at some of our district demographic data. So, we're looking at our subgroups. We're looking at gender data, subgroup data, as well as demographic data that deals with economically disadvantaged students, EL students, and our students with disabilities. So, now, moving on to the SAT, since this is the first year that the SAT was administered, we don't have comparable data. However, when you look at our district scores compared to the state scores, and now, on the SAT, we don't have ELA. It's ERW, which stands for Evidence-Based Reading and Writing. So, we are above the state score in our Evidence-Based Reading and Writing, as well as in math. And also, our total mean score is above the state's total mean score. And then, the state, or sorry, the College Board provides what's called a readiness minimum score. In ERW, that readiness minimum score is 480, and our ERW score is above the 480. In math, the readiness minimum score is 530, and as a district, our math minimum readiness score is above 530, so we are above the minimum score. The state is only above the minimum score, minimum score in ERW. They are not above it in math. On October 4th, we are providing a full day of professional development for our high school department chairs and our high school administrators. We're bringing in a College Board consultant, Sarah Thaler. She is going to take our staff into the College Board's secure site, where we will be able to access all the different reports that are available. She's going to help us interpret how to read the reports and interpret the data. We do not get hard copy reports of the SAT, nor do we get hard copy reports of the MSTEP results. All of the results now are posted on a secure portal. And so, we have been working with our staff and training them to access the MSTEP data on the state's secure portal. But since the SAT is a new test, and we're just becoming familiar with the College Board portal, we're bringing in a consultant to help us with, with becoming familiar with all the data that's there. So, that's the morning. The afternoon, our two curriculum coordinators, Ben Hillard and Christine Finkel, they're going to work with the department chair in using some of the additional tools that are on that site. There's one tool that's called the instructional planning tool, that has an analysis of all of the questions and the depth of knowledge that each of those questions is asking. And it also shows, is going to show the staff how to access each individual student's essay that's also posted on the portal. So, a lot of time will be spent looking at the tools that are available, and then being able to use their data to begin plans. So, what are we going to do differently to support our students instructionally? So, that's the training that's planned for October 4th. The state assessment chart that you have in front of you this evening, we've always been transparent with our community, so we will continue to post that data on our district's website. But we wanted to wait till after we shared it with the Board this evening to post it. We are in the process of getting ready to mail home parent reports. We recently received the parent reports for MSTEP. So, our schools are getting prepared. Those reports will go home in the mail on Friday, along with a one-page colored sheet that the State Department has provided. They gave us online access to this sheet that helps parents read and interpret their MSTEP report. So, we have made, we're in the process of getting that copied and folded and into our school, so that they can insert it into the envelope with each child's parent report. There's also new, a video this year that the State Department has provided on how to read and understand your parent report. So, we are going to have that posted on our district website, a link to that video, and the schools will be communicating the availability of that link to their parents, so that we have tools in our parents' hands that will help them read the report, and then a video as extra support to them. So, at this time, I would be happy to respond to any questions you might have.
Questions or comments? Mr. Centers.
So, do we, there's definitely good news in that we are, we're outperforming the state, which we know we, we are a district that expects that. Is there, now, that, that performance, though, above the state average, that's hard for me to kind of wrap my head around. Is it, are, are we given a percentile in, for instance, eighth grade ELA, we scored a 61, the state average is 49. That 61, is that in the 90th percentile or the 60th percentile? I'm not, do you understand where I'm coming from?
I do, and the state does not provide percentiles.
Yeah.
It's not a percentile ranking, but rather, a percentage of students who are proficient.
Right. Okay. So, it's hard to rank among your peers necessarily how?
Well, we, we do, I'm sorry. We do hope to have for you for the study session, the tri-county rankings.
Oh, okay.
And so, we absolutely will be bringing to you the Macomb, Oakland, and Wayne County by district, by area. And so, that, that will give us at least some level. It won't be the entire state, but we've usually, we've previously used that as a benchmark to take a look at. So, at our study session, we'll definitely be taking a look at that.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I have a question. I just wanted to ask, so, I was intrigued, because it used to be, I don't know if you recall, when we used to have the MEAT test, there, for a period of time, we were able to access a child's essay, for instance, and then be able to see perhaps why they scored where they did. There may have been a brief comment code. We could take their score and take a look at it. And then, we were no longer able to do that. So, you had mentioned, when the College Board comes in to do the professional development with high school department chairs and the administrators, that one of the things that the teachers will be able to access is the essay that the students wrote, see their score, and then be able to make some determination. So, that's pretty significant, because we rarely, it's often difficult, as I think you know and we've shared with you, to truly analyze the former MEAT data, now MSTEP data. We, we do get, you know, we do get the targeted analysis report, but when you're never allowed to see the items, it's, it's difficult for us to go back and know where we need to work, right? So, it used to be that we used to see the items, and then we could see how we did, and then we knew, oh, our students are having some difficulty with metric measurement, or whatever it was. We no longer have that ability. And so, to be able to see something that's significant, I think, has some real potential for us to, to utilize that assessment.
You know, the switch from ACT to SAT has multiple benefits. One, the SAT, we know, is aligned to Michigan standards for ELA and for math. The other is the new College Board portal. You know, when we were administering the ACT, we only received minimal information about student performance and very little information that allowed us to diagnose our strengths and our weaknesses. With the College Board and the SAT, we're seeing a very different, it's, this is a very robust portal that will be able to access data on students, individual students, by classroom, not by classroom, by grade, and by content area. The other thing that I found fascinating when I went to the training is that the College Board has scanned every student's essay, and teachers will be able to access every student's essay, and then will be able to access the score for that essay, and then do a comparison as to if this, if this is their essay, this is the score that they received, and this is why they received that score. That's really beneficial to me as a teacher. I now have information where I can look at groups of students who have similar scores, look at their scores, and do an analysis as to why they have those scores.
Sure.
And help me, as a teacher, better meet the needs of my students.
It just reminds me of when we used to try to create anchor papers as examples for rubrics, you know, what is a four, what is a three, what is a two, what is a one. So, as you, as you teach teachers how to analyze papers and not use any writer's bias, and, you know, you try to use a rubric that, you know, allows you to be objective about that. When we had anchor papers, folks could see, okay, so this is what we would be looking for if we were looking for a four paper. You know, it seems to me like that might give us some really good opportunities to give kids a leg up now, before they take, the next crop of kids take, take that assessment.
And that's the training that we'll do with our teachers that afternoon on the 4th.
Great.
Anyone else? Thank you, Mrs. Ellis.
Thank you very much.
So, this is not the last you've heard of these, but this is just the first, the first blush, and then we'll continue to dig deeper.
Oh, may I, one more thing?
Yes.
Next Monday evening, I will have a slide presentation for the Board. I'm going to highlight many of the professional development programs that we had during the month of August for our administrators, and our teachers, and our parapros, and our new employees. Looking forward to that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
President Burton, that concludes the Curriculum Committee.
Thank you. Next item is item five, Building in Sight. I do not have any items for that. Mr. Johnson, do you have any items?
I don't believe so. Do we have anything?
We do not.
Building sight.
Okay. Next is item six, Legislative. I do not have anything, Mrs. McDonald.
No, I don't either.
Okay. The next is item seven, Policy Committee. I do not have any agenda items, Mrs. Bonifield.
No items for tonight, thank you.
And the last is item eight, the Personnel Committee. I do not have any items, Mr. Centers.
No.
Nope. All righty. Okay. Thank you for hanging in there with us through many important items this evening. Seeing as we've come to the end of our agenda, we are now adjourned. Thank you very much. Have a nice evening.